Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
I would like to call a meeting of the Bellas Falls Union High School School District, School Board meeting to order. Is there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have not.
Nothing?
No, I do not, Molly.
Like to review and approve board minutes of July 13th and August 3rd that are attached. We have a motion to approve or if anyone has any changes?
Motion to approve, Molly.
Thank you, David.
I'll second, Margot.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the minutes? I hear none. So there's a motion on the floor to approve board minutes for July 13th and August 3rd as written. And I'm gonna roll call here. Deb Wright? Margot?
Hi.
Jack?
Hi.
Priscilla?
Hi.
Steve Fine?
Hi.
Cheryl Charles?
Point of order, Molly. Cheryl's a member of our board.
Okay, I just saw her on my list here.
Just hanging out tonight, just visiting.
David Clark?
Hi.
I think I got them all. Did I get them all, Chris? Oh, I didn't see Colin.
Think you did.
Good, Deb?
All right, yes, I did. Motion passes.
Molly, can we go back a step, please?
Sure.
Because my mic wasn't on. I have an adjustment I want to make to the agenda.
Okay.
There's been a request by WNEA to start the teacher's school year on August 25 to give them an opportunity to get ready for school. Under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, that would, the start date would normally be September 1. So WNEA has requested that we move it up to January, or to August 25.
So are you trying to, is that on the minutes for the other meetings?
No, I'm talking about adjustment to the agenda.
Perfect.
Because I think I'd like to put a motion on that in effect allows that to happen.
Okay.
And I, I'm trying to work out some language and I got a memorandum of understanding from Norm Bartlett, which somehow rather seems a bit of overkill to me. And I'm trying to work this out and I'm stuck about the fact that we're going to end up with every board having to make the same agreement for August 25. And I was hoping to avoid that, but maybe we're not going to avoid that.
Well, perhaps we can discuss that when we get to that agenda item. Let's just, can we modify the agenda and then move on, perhaps?
Okay, so you don't have any problem with the board minutes. So when those are approved, we'll go back to adjustments to the agenda. And Mr. Fine would like to add on, well, we don't really have any new business, so let's put it as, let's put it as 5B. We're not going to have any policies, well, we do have some policies. 5B, Steve Fine is going to talk about the WNEA and their start school date.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, communication and public comments.
I don't have anything in the room right now, Molly.
Yeah, I was looking to...
I would like to, if I may, be allowed.
I'm sorry, who's that?
David Mulholland, I'm sorry, Molly.
Go for it.
Okay, thanks. I have a concern about, let's see, recent communication from the governor's office for holding high school sports in the, in the fall here. And the, the wisdom of doing that, on the one hand, I'm a parent of a recent grad and have utmost respect for a number of people whose faces and names I, I see before me. And also therefore a concern for what the district, the high school may be engaging if it does consider to go ahead, decide to go ahead with fall sports as planned and as argued for in, for Montpelier. For those who don't know me, I'm, before a life-changing auto accident, I'm medically trained and served as an epidemiologist, medical college faculty in emergency medicine, and a public health official in, in three different states in different capacities here. So I have both hats and I just want to share some things briefly and I have all kinds of information that I'd like to pass along and make available of what I've, I've learned so far that I think is, is helpful in this decision and maybe for others. First of all, you know, medically, a virus started the disease, but humans start and continue a pandemic. What happens with the disease really depends a lot on, on what we do. Okay? And I know it's been put out there that viruses run their course and that's absolutely true. When they have killed all the susceptible folks in their path, then they start to die off and go away. And that's something we don't want to, to even approach. I think it's important to note a few things. First of all, NIAID, which is Dr. Fauci's federal group, put together a federal strategic plan for addressing COVID-19. Hasn't gone a whole lot of play in the press, but it's out there. And what it says, that if everything goes well, this is a four-year gig dealing with COVID, at the very least. Viruses, coronaviruses in particular typically have an 18-month cycle, about six waves, if you can, what they call flatten the first wave and do that soon enough, the rest of them may even be hardly noticeable. And that's not what's, what's going on. So the risk is, is quite high. A couple of the things in this vein, you know, having a vaccine doesn't mean we have the vaccine. We've been down this road as a nation before. For those of us who are old enough, we're given the Salk vaccine for polio. Then a few years later, it was whoops, indeed the Sabin one. More recently, I have, have gotten a measles vaccine because the ones I had 60 years ago or so were, really weren't that effective. So I, I think, you know, continued caution is really where we need to be. Viruses are opportunistic agents here. And, you know, finally, the, the COVID is not the flu in many different ways and there is no such thing as the flu here. When it comes to sports, many national organizations for scholastic sports have created guidelines in conjunction with medical folks, academic folks, and athletes. And they're quite good and they're quite robust and they're available and they're really quite strict here. And I would hope that the high school and Windham Northeast would consider them seriously because there's a lot of good minds that have put out their best efforts. Research does tell us that COVID-19 can live on the surface of any ball that's used in sports. And there are only certain types of disinfectants that work to clean them. So I haven't quite figured out how a center in football will, will wipe the ball clean and then hike it to the quarterback who will wipe the ball clean before he hands it to the halfback who will wipe the ball clean before he throws it to the tight end for a pass over the middle, who will wipe it before he runs for a touchdown. And then the, the right guard will meet him in the end zone, wipe the ball before he spikes it. It's just not a real practical endeavor to be as safe as, as needs be to play the game. There are higher risks for those who are minority and obese. And there are studies that are out there in, you know, good medical journals that are beginning to show some understanding that there are genetic similarities between the most susceptible to coronavirus and performance athletes. Performance athletes where strength is needed here. And then finally, with, with that train of thought too, you know, please understand that out of shape, students are going to need more intensive workout. And if they're exposed to coronavirus, which attacks the respiratory system, which is needed by the cardiovascular system, what has been proven, and there are actual cases, that student athletes may get stroke. And that's certainly worth considering, you know. So, you know, one of the, the issues for sports in the Northeast that other colleges and schools have, have dealt with, there just isn't at this point time to have longer, less stressful practices to weed out the sick folks and to train safely football players to have a safe football season. You know, that is a consideration rather than having a community event on a Friday night. It's the training time, it's the surfaces of the, of the balls, the equipment, et cetera. So for sports organizations, to date, 46 football conferences around the country have canceled football and/or all pool sports, including those who have canceled winter ones too. Places like RPI and Union who have major Division One hockey teams. Other, the other 19 have changed schedules and limiting and joining the other ones over time to cancel the seasons. On, and, and please remember that those folks, many of those colleges are foregoing billions of dollars, TV revenue, in the name of keeping their students safe. And that should be rather compelling and a sign of how important and how serious they're taking NCAA guidelines and saying, you know, we can't do this. And so we'd rather keep people safe and we will forego the money, billions in TV revenue and keep our students safe. Now, that's extremely, extremely important. And high school organizations have done the same with high schools. Us, at the, to date, there's been 14 states plus the District of Columbia that have canceled football so far. I haven't seen any evidence of, of states that have said, have changed their minds and gone to canceling to having it back on. I mean, that's how, how serious the risks are because we just, in the medical community, don't have good, solid answers for high schools to say, here's how you are safe. The ways we know that we're safe are just simple things, like wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands, things like that. None of those are conducive to play. So I appreciate your time. I'm available to your, your group. Feel free to ask any questions now or later. And I've passed along some information and there's a ton of it. Because I'm affiliated with the American Medical Association, they have a robust body of literature, over 66,000 articles written on COVID so far in the last eight, eight months. So there's a lot of good information here to consider. So thank you for your time and allowing me to share my thoughts.
Thank you, David. Chris, I don't see anything, do you?
No, right now there is nothing in the chat.
We are at policies. Do we have any policies, Chris?
We do not.
So we are going to go to Mr. Fine.
Well, as I said before, WNEA has asked to move the, the teacher year up to August 25. So give them more time to prepare for whatever it is we need to prepare for. And I had sent...
Make a point of order. How are we, this was not on the agenda. So how is this okay for this to be on the agenda now?
It was added.
I had asked for it...
On the agenda?
I had asked for it to be added to the agenda.
How is that?
I started the meeting.
How is, but it wasn't warned on the agenda?
Point of information? Point of information?
Go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. Colin, I take your point. There are only things that, there are things that are legal to add to an agenda and things that are not. Things that are not legal to add to an agenda are items involve money or items involving binding policy. Neither of these are being discussed at the moment. So the chair has a discretion and the body has a discretion to add items to the agenda even after it's printed. And that's what's taking place right now. Molly has given the go-ahead and it was sort of informal sense among the board members, I think, that we did not object to that. So that's why Mr. Fine is speaking.
Okay. I seem corrected.
No problem.
In any event, I had sent, I had spoken to Chris Pratt about this or communicated with him about it. And he said that the administration really has no objection to starting it on the August 25. I don't have any feedback from the negotiating committee that suggests that anybody is opposed to that. I communicated with Sean Murphy on behalf of WNEA and I told him that I felt comfortable he could rely upon an email that I sent him that, okay, we'll start the teacher year on August 25 because he had assured me that there would be no change in, in the year and there would be no new dollars involved in this. Okay? Because that was my principal concern, obviously. So in any event, I got this memorandum of, of agreement or whatever from Norm Bartlett, which is two pages and strikes me as bit, as a bit of overkill. Plus the fact that if we're going to go that route, and I guess we're going to end up doing something like that, we're going to have to get approval from every one of the teaching boards on this. And I was sort of trying to avoid that, but maybe it's just not avoidable. So in any event, that's sort of the background to this whole situation. And I have a motion that I want to make with respect to this. And the motion is to change the teacher's start date for the 2020, 2021 school year from September 1, which it would be under the language of the collective bargaining agreement now in effect, to August 25 at the request of WNEA and with no other changes in any provision of that collective bargaining agreement. That's my motion.
So can we get a second on the motion and then go into discussion? I think we got some questions here.
Could we get a clearer motion before we second that, please?
Thank you.
Can we what?
Steve, repeat the motion. What is it? It seemed...
Okay, I got it. Move to change the teacher's start date for the 2020, 2021 school year from September 1, which it would be under the language of the collective bargaining agreement now in effect, to August 25 at the request of WNEA and with no other changes in any provision of that collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Molly. David?
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to move the teacher's contract 2020, 2021 year from September 1st to October, October, August 25th at the request of the WNEA. It's been seconded, I think there's some questions and...
Well, I suggest that I would like to hear from Chris Pratt because this is based largely on communications I've had with him about this matter.
Absolutely. It's your motion. Let's have Mr. Pratt speak first.
Yeah, you know, so as Mr. Fine said, I know the, a lot of emails going, going back and forth and around. And essentially what the NEA is asking is that, once the governor pushed the starting date to September 8th, that means we're going to push, based on the CBA, all the teachers starting a week later as well. Teachers have requested that pretty much, they start on the 25th originally before the September 8th was put in by the governor. All teachers are going to be back on the 24th. They're asking if they can still come back on the 25th. No change in salary, just pretty much, they pretty much look, asking for permission to show up on the 24th to get started planning for what we're going to be dealing with and giving them that extra time. It's not going to, we're not, we don't need to adjust any of our already planned professional development. It's only for those first few days that the teachers are asking. You know, I personally, you know, like I told Mr. Fine, we could all use any additional time that we have. And when most, most, a lot of SUs out there where teachers are not wanting to come back, we're having our teachers asking if they could come back to, to prepare for our kids. So I think it's a reasonable request, especially there's no new money involved, like Mr. Fine said. And I support, you know, the teachers if they, if they wanted to come back early. And I know we could certainly use that time.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
I have Jack.
Mr. Pratt, just curious, was there any conversation with the AOE on this matter? I mean, there was some speculation in a few blog sites, this was really a, a means to cut a week's, week's worth of teacher's salary given the fiscal situation the state's in. And I don't know if that was just speculation or if there's been any actual discussion about that.
Well, there's been no conversation with the AOE because it's directly tied to the local...
It's about pregnancy, it is, or it isn't?
Yeah.
Right. Yep.
Priscilla?
I have a couple of questions. Stephen had said that it doesn't impact the teacher's contract at all, but it, if we're adding five, five additional days of what is classified as in-service and work time, we're paying, that does change the teacher's contract in that there's 10 days that we have, have allowed for. Also, the state has not yet determined whether they will cut their student days from 175 to 170. And if we have to do the 175, then this means five additional days that we would be paying teachers.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, right.
Those are some things that we certainly need to find out. Teachers can come back and work for anyway, but, and I understand they want to come back and be paid for those days. I would too, when I was a teacher, absolutely. But I think those are considerations we need to find out before...
Have you ever talked about feelings, you know that?
Yes.
Okay, please, please don't speak over each other.
Can someone please, someone's not muted right now, so it's really hard to hear. So if everyone could please mute. So just to give some clarification, when the discussion initially started, the NEA, teachers not looking for any additional money to come back on those days. They don't want them to come back for that. And, I mean, I would say that I believe Mr. Murphy might be joining us tonight. He could actually clarify to the board exactly what the teachers are looking for and the reason behind wanting to come back early.
He's on the list, so I think he's there.
Yeah, I can speak if you want me to.
Yeah, Sean, I think it might give some clarity to the situation and what we're trying to do here.
Okay. So our understanding of the governor pushing the start date back to the 8th was that it would give teachers, administratives, administrators and districts the time necessary to prepare for whatever the fall looked like. And then it came to our attention that our contract kind of handcuffed on us on that and would make it so that we would have to wait until five weekdays before the start date. So if you throw Labor Day in there, that would put us at four in-service days to prepare for a totally different type of, of teaching. And I believe at least one of those days was already booked, if not more. So we have, I think Priscilla just said, 10 built-in in-service days throughout the year. So our hope was to get a jump on preparing and any days necessary to kind of make up if the governor doesn't forgive the, the five student days, we could kind of pull from in-service days that are planned later in the year. So we're not looking to change the, the teacher working days, we're not looking to add to that, we're not looking for any extra money. We're just looking for the opportunity to prepare the best that we can to welcome our students back on September 8th.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what that means is that, it was good clarification, thank you, Sean, is that we have, you know, we could swap off, like, like Sean said, there are days during the school year that are planned and they're already, we already have people providing professional development. But if there are days within there that have not been planned for yet, we would just be swapping those days out so they can come back early to plan.
Any other questions?
Molly?
Yes, go ahead.
Ben, that means there's no additional payroll expended. I understood the way the wording was put by Mr. Fine indicated no additional monies on top of their current contract. I would just try to make sure that there's no additional payrolls they already have as, as Sean was saying, built-in days for in-service. So that would cover, be covered that way. There's no financial impact to the SU for that or to the high school for that. That's what I asked. That was it, that was my question.
Anyone else? I don't see anybody in the chat. We have a motion on the floor to move the teachers...
Can I?
Yes.
However, that's nine days at the beginning that are in-service and you've got two days at the end that are in-service. So that's 11 days right there. You'd have to cut out one at the end no matter what. So you'd be left with nine at the beginning and one at the end. You would not have a day of in-service in October when you're doing the, the level, grade level meetings or any of the other if the governor doesn't forgive some of those days. So it makes it difficult to... Um, so it makes it difficult to approve this motion because if they're saying no additional pay, that, then those days have to count for in-service dates. If we're tell, if we're doing a motion and saying that we are approving their starting work, then we are definitely paying them for those days. Uh, they have the right to come in and work, you know, in their classroom, teachers do that. But if we're making a motion and approving it, we do have to pay them. So just to make that clear.
Mr. Hodgson?
So Priscilla, I would just like to point out that, um, yes, you're right. What we're talking about is, is the shifting of some in-service time, which the teachers are saying is clearly the more important priority for this. Yes, we would sacrifice an in-service day at the end of the year. I'm sure we would hold on to that. There are some other in-service days along the way. There are different ways to get those meetings to happen when they would have been in-service days, like half-days, where you'll still have instructional days, but you'll still have the opportunity to have those meetings. There are ways to pull that off. I fully believe that, um, can be done as described in this motion without, um, changing the, the calendar and without changing the, um, the, um, payroll aspect of this. And I think it's significant that the teachers are recognizing the, that this is a significant issue and it, and it's going to require that time at the beginning of the year. So let's use our in-service time then.
I got Chris Pratt and then Jack.
Thank you, Molly. Yeah, and I think, you know, between the administration and the teachers, we're all willing to work together on this and make it, make it work. And so we're still within the CBA. And as the year goes on, I mean, if the administration is saying we're going to work with the teachers to make sure it all balances out in the end. I mean, I don't see where, um, there would be any hiccups on this. It's not costing us money. It's just one of these things that both sides want to make this happening. And I think, like I said, the administration's willing to work with the teachers to balance out these days at, at the end of the year. Like I said, we could all use that time.
Jack?
Um, you know, procedurally, I'm really uncomfortable with this, though I'm not going to object to Mr. Fine's motion. We, um, the ESU spent a great deal of time yelling at the Rockingham Board the other day about jumping ahead of the other boards and putting into place a, uh, a, uh, full-time versus part-time, uh, school calendar. And here we are, we're not the ESU and we're not the negotiating committee and we're kind of doing the same thing. As a practical matter, maybe we don't have a choice. But procedurally, this is more than a little irregular. This, this should have been taken to, uh, the, the, uh, negotiating committee and then, uh, passed out to the individual boards. We're kind of doing this backwards with the assumption that, uh, the negotiating committee doesn't have a problem, but it's still not really the way we should do things. And I'd hate to, uh, to have this become a precedent. We've also, you know, everybody stood on their mountaintop and said, "We won't negotiate in public" or "We will negotiate in public." And we're kind of negotiating in public right at the moment. Actually, I think that's a good idea. But, uh, and this, but I, I do want my members to appreciate just how kind of off-the-wall this discussion was tonight, even though I'm prepared to vote in favor of it.
Margot?
So I'm wondering, you know, based on what Jack has just mentioned, and, um, I agree with him that this is, it's feeling uncomfortable for me, even though I personally am in support of the recommendation. But I'm wondering if we can vote, just as a possibility, to strongly recommend to the SU Board our wishes, um, to do this and then give the power to the SU Board to decide.
Are you looking to amend the motion?
That's just part of the discussion at the moment. Somebody has a good reason not to before we actually amend it, but I was just thinking out loud.
David?
Thank you, Molly. I, I'll point out to the board that the employees in question, in this case, are the high school's employees. So the ESU can hardly, um, vote to accept on behalf of the high school, just as the high school cannot accept on behalf of Union Elementary or Rockingham.
Thanks. Oh, you're right.
Mr. Pratt, do you have anything to add?
No, yeah, I, 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 I see where Jack's coming from in regards to negotiations and everything like that. You know, I agree with Jack, but I, you know, whatever we can do to move this forward, I think based on all the stuff that's been happening in the past week, we might want to wait and have it start with the ESU Board and then take their guidance back down to equal each individual board.
Mr. Hodgson?
I also will agree with Jack and he and I both know that we get along great and don't always agree. But, um, it is irregular. It doesn't necessarily make it wrong. But I, but what I will point out to everyone is, um, we're on a, we're on the clock here. So we're basically two weeks away from August 25th. And if this thing bogs down in committee, as they say, we'll have this approved by September 1st and it will mean nothing. But, um, however, what I will say and going, going along with, um, Chris Pratt, what that simply means is we've had a good conversation here so that should this then go through the negotiations process in a very timely way and then we have to have a special meeting at noon for one agenda item, you've had your conversation and that conceivably might then, get it done by the 25th and then everybody wins. So...
Mr. Pratt?
And so I just want, I just wanted to throw it out there and it is a question for, um, you know, Mr. Fine and Mr. Clark and those of you who are multiple years of experience with, uh, negotiations. So my question is, is if they're not asking for anything and the administration's willing to work with them and shuffle the days so it really doesn't affect the, the CBA, is there a reason why we still need to get it approved? I mean, if we could just move forward with that? I know, you know, Mr. Fine and myself were thinking that, you know, we wouldn't necessarily wanted it to go through all these different board approvals. But if the administration's willing to work with the NEA and just swapping off days and it really doesn't change anything in the big picture, I don't, you know, is there a reason why we just can't move forward with that? And that's just an honest question. It's not sarcasm at all.
Jack, you unmuted. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, Chris, I have, thi- this is a new one even for me, but I think that, uh, this is one of these cases where you put an addendum on the, on, on the contract and we can do it sort of ex post facto that we, uh, that there was a sense of all the boards that this was okay and, uh, and, and move on. And, uh, just as long as everybody behaves themselves between the time that we start paying them and the, uh, and the time we get the paperwork resigned, I think you'll be okay. It was to be good practice for, you know, getting along and not being particularly legalistic. I think we could all use a little bit more of that in our relationship with our employees.
Colin?
Yes, thank you, Molly. Um, as we all know, I mean, these are, um, these are different times for all of us. And if it's not costing us any money, let's just move forward, guys. I mean, this isn't, in my opinion, I understand the protocol aspect of it, but this is not a national crisis here. Let's just move forward with it and let's support, you know, there's, our staff. I mean, come on, guys. Seriously. It's not the end of the world.
Mr. Pratt, please?
Couldn't the board just make a motion to direct the superintendent to work with the NEA?
Mr. Clark? How about some advice here?
Okay, Molly. I happen to agree with Steve Fine. There should be a, a side letter on this. I guess it comes down to a question of timing. Chris and I've had a brief discussion today about the possibility of having yet another ESU meeting next week with a fairly open agenda. So, um, it's entirely possible that the ESU could meet timely. And then as Chris Haas has suggested, we might be able to have those one-agenda noon meetings and clean it up all ahead of the 25th.
Can I say something?
Absolutely. And then Priscilla?
You know, I, I'm put in a very strange position here because I'm the one that's advocating for WNEA. It's not my typical role in this world, number one. Number two, I, I made this motion because the memorandum that came from, um, Bartlett, to me, is just overkill. And if this board adopts this motion, that at least opens the door to, starting on August 25th, for the high school. Okay, I realize we don't talk for all of the constituent boards, but it's certainly for the high school. And I'm not sure that a formal document is necessary at this point or frankly, at any point. If the board, if this board adopts the motion, then that opens the door to starting things on August 25th. And I don't see anything more than that that's going to be required from the negotiating committee. And I will add, or I should say emphasize something that I said early on in this discussion. And that is that all of the transmissions by email had been sent out by me to all of the members of the negotiating committee and nobody came up and said, "Hey, wait a minute. We don't want the teachers to come back on August 25th." Nobody said anything about anything. And that's why I took it upon myself to do two things. One is to send a, an email to Sean Murphy saying, "Look, you can rely on this email to start on the 25th, assuming as I do, because that's what you said in your message, that there's no other money, no new money that's involved in this transaction." And now here we are having a debate about whether or not we want teachers to start on the 25th so that they can prepare in light of the situation as we all know it exists. And, and it's sort of strange to me, but strangeness, uh, I'm getting used to it in my old age.
Hear, hear! All right, Priscilla.
Okay. Stephen, I appreciate you very much. But here's, here is what I would do to, I think would much, make it much more easily solved. The ESU has already approved the calendar to start on the 25th. So basically, all you're doing is you're changing the five days from the 31st through the 1, 2, 3, 4th of September to be in-service days, which does change the CBA and it's, but it's an, only a one-time thing. So I think that's why Norm probably asked for the letter of agreement. I really think if all you do is do that letter of agreement signed by him and signed by the, the WNEA and the superintendent, you got it solved. It's all taken care of. It's all a done deal. We don't even need a motion. We don't need to do anything. They can come in and start on the 25th, have their extra days of preparation and do that. That would be my, what I would do. Thanks.
Go ahead, Chris.
And I would suggest no damage is done is if you pass this motion and continue on with the second part that Priscilla said. I don't think any damage is done. And if what this does, um, particularly from Steve's perspective is gets the high school covered for them starting. As the high school principal, I am 110% behind that. So if it gets us that, beautiful.
Okay, I can't believe we've had this much discussion and we're letting teachers come back five days early.
I know, it's nuts.
I'd say go for it, guys.
Pass the motion.
So, Mr. Clark, go ahead. You got unmute, David?
Molly, I would like to call the question.
Good idea. Question has been called. We have a motion on the floor.
They would definitely let her know tonight. She said she's not sure. The principal's looking for a...
Okay, so mail's just talking, but let's move, motion to move teachers' contract start date on year 2020-2021 from September 1st to August 25th at request of the WNEA. And let's, this is, the hardest part of my job is finding all you guys. So I've got Colin James.
Aye.
David Clark?
Aye.
Priscilla? Priscilla, are you voting?
Take them to vote.
I abstain.
Okay, we got two ayes and abstain.
Because, because I think it needs to be done the other way.
Deb Wright?
They don't want her to talk.
I abstain as well. Thank you.
Brenda?
Aye.
They're twins. They do things.
Margot?
Aye.
Jack?
Since I'm chair of another board that hasn't voted on this, I feel obligated to abstain, though I am in favor of it.
Mr. Fine?
Yes.
Did I get everybody? Motion passes. Five to three. Okay, next matter of business is unfinished, unfinished business for discussion action. Approve Bellas Falls Union High School reopening plan. Mr. Hodgson, would you like to speak to that?
I would like to speak to that. And, and here's what I want to acknowledge in advance. The plan that we're promoting is the hybrid plan. It is fully aligned with the WNESU plan. It has a minor adjustment for Career Center. I believe I've shared that with folks and folks have had a chance to look it over. And so I'm saying that because I can go into a lot of detail about this and it's important enough to do that. But I'll hit the highlights and then I will let people ask questions. So the highlights are this. We would, um, have a five-day school week, which involves two days of in-person instruction for each student and three days of remote instruction. Student body would be broken into two parts, a Group A and a Group B. We would have Group A with in-person instruction on, uh, Monday and Tuesday. We would have a full day of remote instruction on Wednesday, um, at which time not only would remote instruction go on, but, um, significant cleaning of the building going on. And then Thursday and Friday, there would be Group B with in-person instruction. Um, and the Career Center caveat is, um, the Career Center strongly desires to have their students there for the four in-person days, each one of the days. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. And we can easily pull that off, um, with no disruption to the, at the high school part of the hybrid because that transport, it's, it's a transportation piece and that transportation is happening all four days, even for Groups A and Group B. So there's going to be a bus going to Springfield on every one of those days. And if the Career Center, um, is advocating for four days of in-person, we can support that. Which by the way, one of the reasons I support that is, um, because of the hands-on nature of Career Center programming. And, um, should we find ourselves later in the year having to take steps back and go fully remote, I want those Career Center kids to have as much, um, in-person instruction, um, upfront as possible. So that's the highlights and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Chris. Margot?
Chris, I'm wondering if you could, um, talk a little bit about, so when, um, the days are remote, will, for the high school level, will the remote... remote, will, for the high school level, will the remote instruction be a streaming of what is happening in the classroom so that there's a five-day continuity? Or will it be like projects on the remote days with, you know, the in-person being a separate thing?
So I will give you the honest but wise guy answer, which is yes. So there are some classes that are well given to live streaming where Groups A and Groups B get to participate. I've had some teachers say there will be some of that going on for some of their classes. I've had some say that, that most of their classes will go on that way. But others are better given to that project approach. But the point is that for those five days, they will continue to make progress toward mastering the proficiencies in each class. So it will be different in different classes. I will say, before we ever started down this path, I asked our tech folks if we had the capacity to livestream all of our classes all of the time. And I got a less-than-super enthusiastic yes, but there was a, we should expand our Wi-Fi capability and the strength of our Wi-Fi, which we've done. So if there, if there were far corners of the building where your Wi-Fi reception was sort of good, but not, we've, we've upgraded those things. So, so again, to answer your question, Margot, it'll, it'll depend on the class, but we have the capability to livestream. It just wouldn't be right for all classes. Not every class is, is well-suited to that.
Completely understand. Thank you for clarifying.
So Colin, I'm calling you next, but I also would like to at least have a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it.
Molly, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second, Margot.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the Bellas Falls Union High School reopening plan. Colin, you're up.
Thanks, Molly. Mr. Hossen, could you just quickly explain again, so the, the five-day model and explain the A and B groups? Are you dividing?
Exactly.
Half the students, you know, here, and then half the students there?
So.
What, I, I, you were talking really fast, sorry, and I just, so what days would they be in-building?
Group A is currently district-wide, defined as, by last, alphabetically by last name. So A through K is in Group A. So those students will come to school on Monday and Tuesday. On those days, Group B will be working from home in the variety of ways that I just discussed in my answer to Margot. On Wednesday, everyone will be working remotely. I commented on the, the capacity for us to then have the building to ourselves, you might say, to do some, some deep cleaning. But I also want to point out, that remote day is intended to keep us, keep our skills sharp for purely remote learning. Again, should we reach that unfortunate place where we are going to full remote? So we, we want to make sure we keep those skills strong. We want to make sure that students are used to that. We want to make sure that teachers are used to that. And then Thursday and Friday, if your last name is L through Z, you'll be coming to school, and the A through Ks will be working from home in a variety of ways. Does that answer your question, Colin?
Uh, yes. So it's basically, you know, you got the two days with the one group, Wednesday's off, the two days with.
Uh, let's not put that word off out there because kids will be working, teachers will be working. The learning will be.
What I meant was, nobody in the, the building.
Gotcha. Yep. But, but I gotta tell you, I learned in the last three months, your choice of words matter because people will hear it, particularly students sometimes, and will go, oh, Wednesday's off. We're working.
I'm reading this now. I changed this to, it is with.
Mark, you're not, Mark, you need to mute.
Okay. Um, that's all I had right now. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Jack, are you raising your hand, or?
Hold on, I was writing a note basically, saying I'm going to probably leave the meeting in another minute. I'm having some health issues. I, my main concern about this plan, I, which is similar to all the other plans we've discussed in the other districts, is the exposure to the tech center. I, we're adding a multiplier effect when you add points of contact. This is adding a lot of points of contact. And I do have some concerns about whether or not it blows up the point of having these individual pods, because now you've got something that's spanning them and a common point of, of infection should there be a problem.
If I could speak to that?
Yeah. And then, then I'm probably going to have to go because I really reluctantly may be here at all tonight. Sorry.
So I just want to say, at the high school level, the pod and the cohort approach is different than it is at the elementary. So your pod essentially are the students that you share classes with. So I just want to make sure it's, people are clear. We're going to have our four-block schedule. Students will have their block one class, then they will move to block two, block three, and block four. But we are not scheduling regroupings of students that are not academically based. In other words, what we aren't doing is, we are not coming together for homeroom, which we typically do for a variety of purposes, but we aren't now. We've got a different way to take on those, those goals and objectives. We are not planning to do terrier time at the end of the day, which is a regrouping, really for extra help, but also some other things. But I want to emphasize, Jack, I realize we're sending them to another building, but their pod and their cohort simply is expanded to that Level 1 or Level 2 Career Center program. So it is larger, but it is larger in the same way a student who goes from block one to block two to block three or block four has a, an expanded pod. And I also want to emphasize, I have worked very closely with Scott Farr at the Career Center and the planning that his group is doing. They are taking all of the same COVID health and safety precautions that we are. So they'll be going into a similarly protected environment, but of course, does not remove all of the risk. I'll acknowledge that.
I just think, again, the math of the contact points is what it is, Chris. And you know this as well as I do. I'm not, I don't have a better solution because I'd be offering it if I did. But I do think that some thought ought to be given to having the kids that are up at the tech center stay at the tech center rather than having, having kids from our two groups come over to a different school with a different population mixed together and then come back. Yours, you, there's no question, there's a multiplier effect here, and it, it's not one that makes me comfortable. As I say, I don't have a better solution, but I, you know, part of the pushback about the, about the Rockingham plan was the points of contact. And we're doing, we're doing a lot of that here. And therapeutically, it's pretty questionable. As I say, I don't know how we solve it educationally, but I want us to really keep an eye on that because if there's an outbreak in Springfield, I want us to immediately rethink what we're doing here.
Sure. That's not the way you start talking in one of these meetings.
Priscilla.
I have basically four, four different areas that.
You just muted yourself, Priscilla. You're muted, Priscilla.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Sorry. You didn't have to listen to me. I have basically four different questions that, that I have here. When we were, when I was teaching at the high school, I was concerned when, and I know you were, Mr. Hossen, with, when students, groups of students took days off. So obviously, we do have to look at that, especially if the classes aren't all doing the, the, the virtual and doing that at the same time. But why, if you've got kids going to the tech center for four days and coming back for their other classes in the afternoons, why, what, why aren't we thinking of doing the four days for all the students so that the, those classes weren't, they weren't hitting different students on one group of days, which makes the teacher's plan more difficult? That's my first one.
Your question is, why aren't we having all of our students for four days? Is that what the question was, Priscilla?
Especially in lieu of the, the tech center ones coming back and being in classes with two different sets of students.
Well, they aren't. They aren't. They're staying with their Group A or B. They're not coming back for four days.
So they go home at half-day?
That's right. Yep. Or they come in late if they are afternoon students.
But although, the other thing, side of that is that if we are having them go four days, it seems to me, maybe we should be thinking of ours going four.
Right. And, and we've considered that, but I want to point out, I, I am, for balanced reasons, balanced between the risk and the reward, you might say, accommodating a request from the Career Center. And I, and I explained this early on, the difference here is, Career Center programming is so inherently hands-on that there's an argument to be made, that I'm making and supporting, that their participation there has a greater significance because of that hand-up, hands-on aspect.
Science, art, cooking, all of those things are too at high school. Anyway, just a comment. Second question. We have CCV classes available to some of the students, too, I believe, at the high school level. Have those been looked at as far as maybe increasing the students doing those if they're not going to be in classes, you know, full, full through the week?
Well, so we have dual enrollment classes that we have in our building. We don't really have, we haven't, we, and, and I want to say, we have a state-level option of early college for seniors, and some have been taking advantage of that. Some more have been applying for that. But we really haven't, except for those. And again, those CCV dual enrollment actually are our classes, and they are taking them here. So we don't really have genuine, unto-themselves CCV classes to present.
Okay. Next question has to do with the sports. I understand that previously, students had to be physically present to be able to participate in a sports practice that day. If the students can't, aren't coming to school that day, then it would fall that they would not be participating in that particular sports practice. Or we're saying that, that amount of infection-type possibility, we're ignoring that and saying that they can do that for sports. Is, is that true, or is that?
So there's a couple of points that you're making there. First of all, students need to be in attendance on a day in order to participate. Attendance on remote days is measured differently, but they would still need to be in attendance. So if a student quote-unquote blew off one of their remote days, then right, they would not be available for practicing. But again, the, the, the second part of your question, Priscilla, plays to that challenge in creating this plan in general. We have two primary goals that we're looking to serve, and they run almost in conflict with each other. One of them is providing an education in a way that is done with COVID-19 safety and issues in mind. The other part of it is, because if all we did was care about that, if that's all we paid attention to, we would be talking about a fully remote plan. The challenge is, having spent three months fully remote, there are many organizations and many studies that have recognized the, the downfall to learn, not just learning progression, but social and emotional issues for students. So by bringing them in for in-person, we're addressing that. By making sports available to them, we're also addressing that. So I agree with you, Priscilla. I mean, anyone can make an argument about if it's, if we're declaring that it's not safe enough to do this, then clearly it's not safe enough to do that. But because of these two conflicting priorities, there's going to be a compromise that's going to be made. Like I said, if we were 100% about the safety, we'd be 100% remote.
Okay. And my last one, then, and thank you for that. I mean, I do feel that the sports are very important, and sometimes they, that's the only way students want to be involved in school. So I, I, I really support that as well. But I know that the Rockingham Board just voted on this, and with the caveat of working toward moving to full-time in-person with the superintendent and between the superintendent and the board working on that as soon as possible. Are you looking at moving that up? Are you looking at continuing with, with the remote for longer than the six weeks? What, what is your position on that?
So I, I'm not going to even try to tap into my crystal ball on when we can move to the next level. But I will tell you this. As we came up with our plan, the starting point for us was, what would it look like if we, if we came back fully, for full engagement, for full enrollment? And once we got an idea what that would look like, then we said, so what does a hybrid look like? We didn't have to go to what does fully remote look like, because we already know what that looked like. And having considered all of those, for all of the reasons that have been discussed by all of the boards, that hybrid approach makes the most sense for starting school. But Priscilla, I don't think there's a single person that's working at high school that doesn't prefer everybody being there. So we're not going to delay it any more than we have to. But again, I go back to those two conflicting priorities. We got to make sure that we're taking care, as reasonably as we can, all of the health and safety concerns. And we got to make sure that we're taking care of, as reasonably as we can, all of the social, emotional needs that aren't always attended to unless we're together. So getting everyone back together, that's what everybody wants. We just have to make sure that the time is right and the situation is right for them.
Does, does the, the state moving to step three after the second week of school, as long as they do what their prediction is, does that have some merit in looking at some of the programs that you're doing?
Because that is going, I mean, the state's guidance as to what we can or can't, or should or should not do, certainly drives decision-making here. But I will also say, I think that one of the strongest reasons for starting out slow is to get our finger on the pulse of not just policies and procedures, but what are the outcomes? And if the outcomes of us coming together is, we're still doing perfectly fine as far as our health is concerned, and the procedures we have in place are working, then we're in a place to baby-step ourselves sooner rather than later to full engagement.
Thank you. That was it.
Great.
Any other questions for Mr. Hossen? I'm checking here, but I'm a little slow at it. I see nothing. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Bellas Falls Union High School reopening plan. Priscilla?
Oh, I hate that. Mute, unmute. Yes.
David Clark?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Stephen Fine?
Yes.
Thought I lost you. Deb Wright?
No.
Margot?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? I'm sound it. The yeses have it. The motion has been approved to the Bellas Falls Union High School reopening plan. Thank you, Chris. Nice job.
Well, thank the staff. It was, was a team effort.
Good. Thank you. Director's comments? Margot?
Um, none at this time. Thanks.
Brenda?
I'm all set.
Priscilla?
I'm all set.
David Clark?
Thank you, Molly. I watched a Rockingham school board meeting, which immediately preceded this one. I would describe it as having been transformational because there certainly was a high degree of cohesiveness shown by that board. And I'm pleased to see that it looks like Rockingham really wants to work with every other board in this district, as well as administration. I'm hopeful that we can look for the creative way to get the schools open as quickly as possible while being mindful of the safety implications of doing that. That's my comment. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Colin?
Yes, I definitely want to thank the staff for, you know, and Mr. Hossen and everybody at the high school for, you know, the hard work that has gone into this. But, you know, there, this, you know, says, we all know this is not over. So, you know, it's, we still need to take, and I know that we will take, you know, severe precautions moving forward. So, thank you.
you know, severe precautions moving forward. So, thank you.
Deb Wright?
No comments. Thank you.
Stephen Fine?
I have nothing. Thank you.
I think I got everybody. Agenda items for next board meeting, email them to Chris Hosden or Chris Pratt or myself. Date of next board meeting is September 14th. And I would like the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. David seconded. All those in favor, good night.